This evening with a presentation by Larry.
Hello, this is a public hearing to reconfirm our SIPA compliance. SIPA is the Children's Internet Protection Act. The Children's Internet Protection Act requires that K-12 schools and libraries in the United States use internet filters and implement other measures to protect children from harmful online content as a condition for the receipt of certain federal funding. Edwardburg Public Schools is required to annually reconfirm our SIPA compliance. We currently employ a checkpoint content filter and firewall, and locally installed Bloxy software to provide this compliance. All students and staff sign a network and internet acceptable use agreement each year, and every network computer presents the acceptable use agreement prior to user login. Edwardburg Public Schools has been SIPA compliant since 2001 and will continue to update our equipment and policies to provide the safest online environment possible for staff and students. Are there any questions from the board or community? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Okay, at this time, I'm going to call our school board meeting to order, and we are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now move on to the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve. One from our meeting Monday, July 10th, and one from our meeting Monday, August 7th.
You can accept both minutes.
Support. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. I have no additions or corrections.
Move to approve the agenda.
Support. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Moving on to items of business and the payment of invoices. Justin?
Yes. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable payments from report 23-8-21 dated August 21st, 2023 as presented.
Support.
Are there any questions or discussion about that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Moving on to the 2023 levy general debt, general fund debt fund. Gail, are you speaking to this?
Yes. A couple little things to say about it. So every year, we work with PFM Financial and RJ Naughton to set our debt levy amounts. This year, we are looking at the same dollar, or same millage amounts as we did last year. It's a total of 2.85 mils. 1.15 for the 2012 refunding bonds and 1.7 for the 2016 bonds. And I'd also like to add that the 2016 bonds will be paid off after this levy year. So, so I just need you to pass a motion that we can go ahead and approve the 2.85. If you look at your L-4029 form that's in your packet, it also shows the 18 mils that was already voted on earlier this year. So we're just doing the debt mils. Does anybody have any question on the debt mils?
Is there a motion to accept the mileage as presented?
Motion to accept.
Support. This will require a roll call vote. So Tony?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Natalie?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And Tammy?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the SIPA compliance internet safety agreement as presented by Larry earlier? So moved. Support. Is there any questions or discussion regarding that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Moving on to personnel. Mrs. Susanna Andersstrom has requested a leave of absence for the 2023-2024 school year, and I recommend that we approve this leave as requested. Is there support?
Support.
Is there any question or discussion regarding that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Moving on to our new staff recommendations. I'm pretty excited about this. There's a lot of familiar faces. We're going to start with the intermediate principal, Mr. Andrew Jordan. And we'll do all the hiring together as one group, so our safety in numbers.
All right. Well, it's my honor, privilege, and joy to announce the rehiring recommendation of Lisa Jacobson. She had spent 27 years with the district, and she had retired in 2022. She spent some time last year doing some reading intervention stuff at the primary, and she is back, and she's had four children that have gone through the system. And so we are extremely excited to have her back as recommended at a fifth grade position at the intermediate school.
Thank you. Mr. Born?
All right, I'm going to go off the cuff as well because I haven't worn these in public yet. So I chose not to write it down. Good to see everybody this evening after a summer away. I'm up here on behalf of the middle school, Mrs. Broxma, Mr. Sebra, to recommend the rehire of Mrs. Caroline O'Toole. So Mrs. Caroline O'Toole, I say rehire. She spent the vast majority of her teaching career at Edwardburg Middle School. So she's been away for a few years, and life has brought her back. I'd imagine, I know we are excited but thrilled, ecstatic, elated, are probably some of the words that she's, she would probably use as well. If you also don't know, she's an Edwardburg graduate. So being home, that just has a special twist. Her husband Patrick and her, they have two Eddys of their own. Lana's a junior, and Killian is going into third grade. Killian, the one that I saw walk in the neighborhood in a baby stroller just a minute ago. It's crazy. So anyway, we would like to recommend her as a special education teacher at Edwardburg Middle School. Thank you.
Mr. Markle?
Good evening. We're going to stay in the theme of rehires. I great privilege tonight to recommend Mr. Kenneth Greenwich to join the high school staff as a business teacher. Ken graduated from Western Michigan University. He also, with his bachelor's, he also got his MBA from IU, and he brings a wealth of knowledge in the CT world. And so we're super excited about the possibilities that we can enter into based on his certification, and just did a wonderful job with us when he was here last time. Went away, found his wife, and she was kind of on board last time. She wasn't his wife, and so now, you know, she was helping me bring him back. That's kind of how that went. But we're glad to have, to have Ken and Greenwich and his wife Julia to join, or recommend them to join our team. And then in the back there, we have Mr. Peter Hoffman. And Peter is, has a degree in chemical engineering from Lafayette College. Then he also has his master's in chemical engineering from the University of Notre Dame. So he's had a lot of experience teaching AP, both at Elkar and Jintown, and we're incredibly excited to see what he's going to do. He's got a real passion for science. It's evident when he talked to him. He loves science, and he's going to take our, our science classes to a new level as it relates to AP and things of that nature. So we kind of lost the dream team. If you remember the, you know, the '92 dream team, and now we're putting together the '96 dream team. And so we're really excited about what we're trying to do at the high school with our new hires.
Awesome. Is there a motion to approve the hire, Mrs. Jacobson, Mrs. O'Toole, Mr. Greenwich, and Mr. Hoffman?
So moved.
Support.
Are there any questions or discussion regarding that?
Welcome.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Welcome to the family. Would anybody like to say anything? This is your time to shine, Mr. Greenwich.
I'm just glad to be back.
He told me he has something special planned for the back-to-school luncheon.
To meet with you?
Yes.
Welcome back.
All right, welcome.
Yes.
Moving on to the Michigan Association of School Board Certification of Delegates. Based on our district's student membership, we're entitled to three voting delegates and an equal number of alternates. The Delegate Assembly will be held Thursday, November 9th, 2023 at 7:00 in Lansing, Michigan. Is anyone interested in that? As a little side note, last month, we voted on a legislative liaison for MASP. At that time, I asked what, what the responsibilities of the legislative liaison were. Come to find out, it's something they did away with years ago. There are no responsibilities, so it's not something we need to be concerned with. We don't need to vote on that anymore. So just FYI. But we do need delegates for the Delegate Assembly. It is November 9th.
Chelsea, wasn't there an aspect of this that you could do like the Saturday class online as opposed to actually sending?
Yes, but you have to be in attendance on November 9th to be a voting member. And we get three delegates that can vote or present. You will?
I would like to, too.
I can as well?
Okay. Would anybody like to be an alternate?
I have done it in the past. I can be the alternate.
Okay.
I've done it multiple times.
Okay. Anybody else interested? All right. So is there a motion to approve Tony, Natalie, and myself as being the delegates? Becky as the alternate?
So moved.
Support.
Are there any questions or discussion regarding that? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Moving on to the Marion Cass School Board Association Delegate. So the Marion Cass School Board Association Delegate, we need to appoint a delegate and an alternate there as well. This is something that had fallen by the wayside before 2020. It was dormant, and they're trying to resurrect it. It's an association with all the school board members from Cass and Marion County. They are trying to have at least two meetings a year, and they had three this year. The first one, they talked about policy, MASP policies, and their goal is to train better board members. The second one, they have, they are starting to adapt like orientation packet for board members, and our wonderful Dr. Suits is working on our own. So we can email it out to everybody, and all of the information will be at your fingertips. They are planning on having a get-together, a social, like networking get-together in November for all the board members and the superintendents. Would anybody be interested? That's November 2nd at 6:00. It's going to be at SMC.
You sent us an email regarding that, right, Chelsea?
Yes. But we do need a delegate and an alternate. If no one is interested, I, I am interested in being the delegate. Anybody?
I have a conflict with that.
Yeah.
Basis loaded is that same night, yeah.
Yep. Is anybody interested in being the alternate?
I can do that.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve myself as the delegate, and Becky as the alternate for the Marion Cass School Board Association?
So moved.
Support. Are there any questions or discussion regarding that? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Moving on to NEOLA policy. I would like to present for the first reading, NEOLA policy regarding consent agenda. It's policy 0166.1. "The Board of Education shall use a consent agenda to keep routine matters within a reasonable timeframe. The following routine business items may be included in a single resolution for consideration by the Board. A, the minutes of prior meetings. B, the bills for payment. C, hiring of personnel. D, resolutions that require annual adoptions such as bank signatories, Michigan High School Athletic Association memberships, etc. E, resignations and leaves. F, NEOLA policy. A member of the Board may request any item to be removed from the consent agenda or resolution and defer it for a specific action and more discussion. No vote of the Board will be required to remove an item from the consent agenda. A single member's request shall cause it to be relocated as an action, action item eligible for discussion. Any item on the consent agenda may be removed and discussed as a non-action item or be deferred for further study and discussion at a subsequent board meeting if the superintendent or any board member thinks this item requires further discussion." Are there any questions or discussion regarding the first reading of the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the first reading of the consent agenda?
I don't think we have. We have to do that? I don't think, I think you just read that.
Just?
You know?
Okay.
Yeah, you just read it, and then we'll go.
Does anybody have any questions or?
I do.
Okay.
So for the hiring, would we still go through the same process like tonight where they presented the person and we learned a little bit about them?
I think we can do that.
Okay, I would still like to include that part.
Yes, I, I agree. I think it's, it's up to us what we include in the consent agenda.
I like having it be used for like a leave or something that was a little bit more simple that didn't go into. Yes. Of course, want to celebrate all the new hires. It says hiring of personnel here. So I, I would like to maybe not have that as part of it because I like to, to hear, and I think it's good for everybody to hear that part.
And we can at any time move those from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. It doesn't take just a motion by a board member. That's it.
Okay. I agree with you, though, Natalie. Like, I like the recognition.
Yeah.
And that policy.
Yep. And just keep that as a separate one?
Yep.
That way, we don't have to remember each time.
Yeah.
No worries. That was just the generic.
Right, I, I see that.
Policy that, that NEOLA provided for us.
And what about resignation? What?
It was just the generic policy that NEOLA provided for us.
Because the only resignations that we would be yours, correct? So I don't really think that should be the resignation part. Just for some reason, I think that's something we all like.
We're going to discuss.
Yeah, I'd like that to be discussed.
Then just change it to leaves?
Yeah, leaves, that's fine. Like we just had.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, well, first, I just want to welcome and re-welcome our new staff members. Getting to talk with each and every one of them was a lot of fun to get to know why they're either coming back to, you know, rejoin the Eddie family or why they're choosing to be a new Eddie like myself here. So I just wanted to say welcome to everybody, and a great, great job by all of the buildings, too, to find such awesome candidates to have either returning or new to the district as well. I know a lot of the principals and staff members gave up a lot of their summer to be able to do that and fill these positions. And then also, I just wanted to give a thank you to John, Pabuta, and Macy today for their work on looking at keeping our players safe coming into the game that was scheduled for Thursday night, and then given the possible heat index of being at that MHSAA guideline of 104, being too hot for not only the players but all of us that would be in attendance as well. So that was just nice work by all of the, the high school athletic team to be able to get that moved and work with the other district to do so. And then just some fun things that have been going on in August. Band camp was awesome to go up and hear all of the, the students and their sectionals and what they were working on, and really seeing the teamwork between Jacob and Jennifer and, and what they're doing for the band. So really excited to see them as well now on Friday night. And then just getting ready for school, the amount, the amount of work that all of our staff are doing, but especially our custodial and maintenance staff, going through the buildings and having them show me all the ins and outs, the amount of pride and work that they have done over the summer. I'm pretty sure in the primary building, you can see your face in the floor. It is so shiny. And so it was just really cool to see and hear from them, too, all of their input about all their teaching staff, and just the great things they had to say about the personalities of everyone there and what they do for kids. It just again was that Eddie pride just shining through, and it was really awesome to see all the work that they're doing for kids. And with that, the summer school teachers, they were still going strong on that last day of summer school at the intermediate building. The kids were still working, and I came over in like the last few hours before lunch, and they were still working on their math and their reading. And up at the high school, getting ready for the, with the middle school to high school boot camp, and then working on the credit recovery to, to get, you know, either ahead or get caught up so they, that all of our high school students can have a good year. The roof, if any of you have been over at the middle school, not only seeing that the trees are down now, so there's a clear sightline, but Midland has been really putting in a lot of hours on getting that roof to, to be completed, you know, by that October date and not be working over the areas where there's kids in classrooms. So between Midland and Carney, and then everybody like from, from Gail and Chris working to make that happen. It's, it's been great to see. And then last but not least, I just want to say for the community members that came out to the community meeting, we are finally, we got an updated PowerPoint with correct numbers that will be going up on our website by tomorrow with an additional questionnaire so that if there's community members who couldn't attend, that they're able to provide some input that will hopefully give us some good direction on, on where we're looking to head in terms of facilities. I shouldn't have said last, but at least, but also in your board packets, just to bring attention to the annual reports for each of the schools. That's a lot of good information in there for you to review. And then hopefully, you guys have all seen our, our awesome new calendar that we have out. The future is bright, so Tim put a lot of work into that as well. So just exciting times to get ready for, for the start of a, a new school year.
That's all I have. Well, thank you.
Hey, Courtney.
Yeah.
You brought up the sightline.
Yes.
I did see some, or heard some comments about people wanting to understand why.
Yeah, so really, that was a safety recommendation in terms of, you know, we had Manny De La Rosa out to look at where there could be some, not problems, but where we could, you know, make improvements to make our buildings and grounds safer where people couldn't be hiding.
Yeah, there was a risk associated with the.
Yeah, there was a risk associated with the.
Yeah. And so that's where that came from. Yeah, we didn't, we didn't want to cut down beautiful trees. But we did want to make sure that our grounds are as safe as they can be for all of our, our, our Eddys.
Right. Thank you.
Moving on to our subcommittee reports. Is the policy committee the only committee that met in this past month? Okay. Turn it over to you, Tammy.
Okay. I seem, I feel long-winded in this, but I'm going to try to do the best. We've had a couple of different meetings here, so, and a lot of great ideas in the room. So the last meeting that we had, we reviewed several policies that have not been updated in quite some time. And so we chose a few. We know that we have quite a few to get through. I think one of our policies was written in 2014 as well as some others. So we tried to focus on a few that made sense. Tonight, we had a meeting prior to this meeting where we followed up on some of those topics. And we didn't get through to all of them for our updates because we had a couple of attendees tonight from the boosters with some amazing ideas around one of the policies that we were reviewing, which was the facilities usage, or I'm sorry, sponsorships, my, my mistake. So the sponsorship policy, which is nine seven zero zero dot zero one. This has come up a few times in the past few years where people would like to sell sponsorships or signage or different things. This also kind of is including the commemoration topic that was brought up a few meetings ago. So tonight we had the pleasure of having Nikki Welsh and Brad Hafner join us for a short presentation around the boosters and what their vision is for being able to sell sponsorships in the future. So they presented some fundraising ideas, but the important message coming out of it was that it was equally spread across all sports. And we even talked about sponsorships or boosters that included groups that are outside of athletics, which I know is important to each and every one of you to really be able to include all these other groups. So we have some takeaways and some homework around making sure that the policy is clear and concise, that it's coordinated efforts, that it's also approved and that it, it meets the guidelines of what we have. So we'll be meeting again on that. And then the boosters have some, some callouts that we want to bring back to the next policy committee meeting, which is yet to be determined as to how we move forward with that. There are a lot of districts that are taking advantage of that and we don't do a lot of that today. The facilities usage was brought up a couple of meetings ago. So the last work session, we allowed three different groups of people to come in and actually present their ideas. One was around the driver's training and bringing that back to the schools. We had it when Tony and I were both in school here and some schools offer that policy. So we were lucky enough to have Rob Wright come in and present his ideas and options around that. And so we worked through that to understand what that looked like, how the kids would be attended to, so on and so forth. We had two other groups that came in. It was the Camp Tana Duna program, which actually is a before and after school program for children. The thing that I thought we really were impressed with was it would be like a seven, 10:00 in the morning drop off, but they would go until 6:00 PM, which was great. So we would look at options for that, but we allowed them to present their ideas. That's a big need in the community. And then also Burt's Field Black Belt around some things around discipline and things like that, what they thought they could bring into the schools for us. So we looked at that because some of these are for profit. It's not been allowed in the past. So those are things that the, the policy committee are, are, you know, looking at now and to be, to be determined on, on who we allow and what and how. And then there was another topic that was brought up, we didn't get to tonight, which was a potential student body representation as part of the, the Board as kind of an honorary member, if you will, to bring the voice of the students. This pertains to policy number zero one four one dot one. And so there was a discussion on the pros and cons and the approach. So we didn't get to follow up on that tonight. So we have our hands full on some additional topics and a follow-up meeting is yet to be determined to go next steps for each of those.
Well, I asked for the student body representative information to be included in the board packets so we could discuss that as a board. It was included in your, your policy committee meeting last month and it's something that I did a webinar on in December and it struck me as very interesting then. A lot of area schools do have student body representatives on their board.
This is not on the agenda to discuss right now in the meeting, so we really shouldn't be having this kind of debate at this point about the pros and cons of it.
It's, it's on the policy updates. It's on the agenda under subcommittees.
But you're trying to talk about a policy in specific about the pros and cons of it that really should be on the agenda for discussion?
It is on the agenda for discussion under policy updates. It's under subcommittee reports, policy updates. I would like to discuss.
Policy update. Okay. That, that's on the agenda for the policy update.
Yes, this was.
She just did the policy update.
I asked for this to be included in the agenda so we could discuss it as a board because I think it's important. If you guys don't think it's important, I would like to present it as a first reading at our next board meeting. I would like to have this be something we did this year. But if you're opposed to it, if you don't.
What I'm saying is we're out of order.
But we're not.
I don't think so.
We're not. It's on the agenda. I asked for it to be on the agenda. It's on the agenda, policy updates.
If it's a discussion item, it should be more of a work session topic though, I believe.
No.
No.
We can discuss that regularly because we just try not to make this too long.
If you guys think we're not out of order, that's fine.
That's why it was included in your board packet so everybody could have the opportunity to read over everything.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions or comments about what a student representative would look like? A lot of area schools have them, Coloma, St. Joe, and they all have policies around them.
Did you guys have a chance to touch on it or not in your meeting?
We talked about it at the last meeting.
Okay.
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 Is this our current policy or is this just a proposed policy?
This is a generic proposed policy.
I misunderstood when it was in the packet. I thought it was already our policy.
We do not, we do not have a policy.
And I do believe that proposed policy should come out of the policy subcommittee.
We already discussed this at subcommittee.
She came out with a policy of her own.
It's a Neola policy.
This is a Neola policy that I would like to present at our next board meeting, but I'm asking for discussion with the Board.
I understand.
So my objective as a school board is to build community support. And I think that this would be a great way to bring in another voice, another perspective to broaden all of ours perspective on our school district. I have asked the athletic boosters, the PTO, the teachers' union, the band boosters that they would like to start come presenting at our meetings. And I feel like a consent agenda will speed up that part of our meeting in order to make us more, to hear the voice of our community.
Okay.
So I think this is an important thing. I think that why are we making decisions about the students without their input?
Well, I think that we can certainly get their input. I, I am personally not in favor of having them on the board.
What, where does your opposition come from?
Well, there's a couple of things that I would be a little nervous is, for one thing, would be a bit of a conflict of interest. So if they're on the board, would that give them some unequal sway with possible teachers, administrators, something like that? I know most people would.
They don't get a vote.
But if they have a voice at the table.
They do get a voice at the table.
That's what I'm saying. If they have a voice at the table and influence.
It's their job to bring concerns of the student body to us and then to take our voice back to the student body.
Right. You asked me if I have any opinions on this and I'm giving it to you. I'm not, I'm not trying to argue with you about it. I'm trying to tell you my, where my concerns would be, would be more from a, a kind of a conflict of interest possibly because they could have a, a bit of a sway.
With a teacher, Tony, or help me understand this.
Say a teacher had a certain interest, would they be talking to that student more? Would they give them a little more, you know, interest or whatever because of something that's theirs? Would all of a sudden, would that student also be under a little more kind of a scope of like that person's getting more preferential treatment? They're on the board.
Yeah, let's talk about how we currently can hear from students. So are we doing, are we, Courtney, are we doing where the students are part at the buildings? Don't the principals do a building level? Maybe you could expound on that for me. I know I've heard of it or one of you.
I've been here when we had students yet.
I have not had the pleasure to be at any buildings, but I do know for example, example, Mr. Markle at the high school does meet with students.
Because I'm all for having students come in and participate. I think if you did something like what you're seeing with the PTO or something like that where they had a regimented, come in and give their opinion, be a, be a voice, all that, I'm all for that. And it would, especially if it would be a group of them instead of only one senior, one junior, you know, that's only one person instead of maybe being more people involved in the process. I would be all for that. And, and that's really not for us to make a policy. That's really more for the administrators and Courtney to do. So I, I think the more that they are involved in the Board, I think is great. I just don't think that it's a good idea to put them, especially with the amount of time that we've been having to, to give as well. That's a, that's a lot of time that, that they would have to allow to be up here to vote, you know, and most of what we did today was not a lot of discussion. It's a lot of us voting and things like that, so.
A consent agenda would consolidate a lot of that and give us more time for back and forth and discussion to get their opinions. That's, that was the point of me including the consent agenda in today's meeting.
If I can just make a comment, I agree with you, Tony, on the fact that we love to have student voices in the room. I think a council who comes in and speaks once a quarter, once every couple of months would be a great idea that is a vast array of students that are from, whether it be student council, maybe multiple buildings, bringing ideas. Where I get concerned is the amount of pressure that that person is and/or that group or those individuals are going to be under. I don't want to take us backwards here, but the last year has been pretty stressful as a board member. The last thing I want to do is put extra pressure on our students. So I'd like it to be a group that, you know, they want to come in and talk and that it is an all-inclusive group, maybe multiple buildings. I know personally, and maybe I shouldn't say this out loud, but I will. My son, as someone who, a student with a school board member parent, he feels immense pressure about certain things sometimes and tough decisions and things like that that he mentions in passing. And so what I hate to do is add pressure to our students. I just think a, a group of them coming in with some sort of a council to be all-inclusive, I think would be a better idea than putting pressure on one or two students in, in the district. That's just my opinion.
Having sat through the subcommittee part, I'm a huge proponent of this. I think that we make every decision based on what we feel is best for our students.
For students.
I think the best way to get a perspective on how our decisions affect them and how our potential decisions affect them is to have them at the table. At the end, they don't get a vote. And to your comment, first of all, I think that our, our staff is professional and I don't feel like they're, I'm not particularly worried about our staff favoring students because they have a non-voting seat at the table. I think that most of us have kids in the district enrolled right now and that's not a consideration.
So, yeah, I, so Natalie, could we, could we share this maybe with our high school and our assistant high school principal? Just kind of, there's some rationale and you might, may not have seen this. And maybe you guys could have a little bit more conversation outside of the Board? What do you think Natalie, as a next step?
I, I do think that's good. I think that not every student wants to do this. Not every student is going to sign up for this.
It would be an application.
Right. And the principal and the assistant principal would have to be involved if we were to go in that direction at all.
So they would have to apply and then they would interview. We would all see their applications and their interest and what qualifies them, you know, to be on the Board. And then they would go through an interview process with the superintendent and Mr. Markle and a Board member. And then the three of them would supply their recommendation to the Board. This student would sit on our Board and would have a voice, wouldn't have a vote, but would have a voice. And I have heard over and over about, we would like more perspective. We would like to see all of the things. That's a voice of our student body.
I'm not opposed to getting their voices. I'm, I'm all for that.
So this.
I just think that there's better ways to do it.
Yeah, and so I think.
Because I don't think it's also very inclusive. You're getting one voice instead of maybe more of a.
That student's job to go back and report to the student council and to hear. So you would want a student who's involved in sports or involved in band or involved. But I don't think it should be a student council member because that's voted on by the students and can be considered a popularity contest. I want it to be somebody who wants to be here, who wants to be involved.
I still think this is a Neola policy. It still needs to be discussed in the policy committee before it's brought for a vote.
Well, it was, it was taken to the policy committee a month ago.
But two of the three in the room were not on board, but yeah, we're discussing.
And that's why I asked for it to be brought to the whole Board so we could discuss it as a Board.
The, the policy committee doesn't get the final say in what gets addressed.
No.
That if we are looking at changing a policy, it is something that the whole Board votes on. We don't make decisions about policy in the subcommittee. The subcommittee is designed to gather information, to hold a preliminary discussion, but it is not meant to forbid things from coming to full vote for the full Board.
And I did gather, I heard your concerns and I heard your questions and I gathered more information and had it put in the board packet for everybody. If you would like me to share the, the webinar that I did in December, I will share that with you.
I understand where you're coming from and I understand the pros and cons. I'm not saying it's a horrible idea, just not something I'm in favor. And I think that there's better ways. The person is here to, to not vote. They're here to give their, their information. I think a group of them giving information and taking information back is better than one or two.
That's what we do.
And the other thing, can I finish, please? The, the other thing is you're only getting a junior and a senior. What about the middle school? What about the intermediate? What about the elementary?
We cover that in our educational highlights. They come to our Board meetings and do educational highlights nearly every month, a different entity brings a group. Yeah.
I'm just, I don't think you're understanding. That's fine.
You're saying that you feel like the high school will be represented but not the other classes?
Yes.
Hundred percent.
I think that's something to consider. I also think we have to be somewhat aware that while I love the small children, their ability to really participate in a discussion about a policy might be a little bit limited. So focusing on the older kids makes sense to me.
It might be really great to hear from those little kids. They might be really enthusiastic about something that might be a highlight, you know? Bright spot.
I think the other thing that I really like is that a lot of our families stay here and those kids that are part of the board process and learning about what it takes to be part of a Board, whether it's here or someplace else, can be a very valuable experience. And it may be setting us up for some future Board members who come in for all the right reasons and, and have already been through that process to know what they're getting into. And I think that it's beneficial today and I think it's beneficial down the road.
Mr. Markle mentioned that he had participated in his school board when he was in high school.
This, yes, this is a very common thing.
It's a very common thing.
What about a full staff, like polling that, you know, a, a survey monkey or something like that, that we can get some input that's outside of us? I, I'd love to hear what all of you guys have to say.
I would like to talk about it as a Board. It's our decision what is on our agenda and how we, the policies. The school Board leads through policy and through vision. I think that this is a way to broaden everyone's vision.
Yeah, and I, I do think though, it would be great to share what you shared with us, Chelsea, with Mr. Markle and, yeah, I, I think, and then perhaps, you know, if our administrators can give Courtney their thoughts, then we'll know whether or not it should even, you know, have future life, I guess. I think there's a lot of, I think we would all agree that we definitely want to hear from students. Cause right, I mean, that's why I'm on the school board, is, is to make the right decisions for the students, all the students. I don't think any of us would argue that. The, the, the next, you know, the next thing is how do we, and are we doing that already enough? I don't, I'm not saying we are. I'm not answering that question. I'm throwing it out there as a question. And, and so make sure that we understand how we're getting student input now, I think is also good. So, so what do we do? So, so what do we do? What are our next steps?
I'm not just coming out of left field with this. I have spoken to Ryan about it. I have spoken to Courtney about it. Um, and I would like to see us move forward with it. Um, I would like to present a Neola policy of our own at our next board meeting. It's not something that we can change overnight and start at our next board meeting. But I would like to present a Neola policy at our next board meeting, but I'm not going to do it if there's.
Can we allow some time to discuss a little bit as well and present it as a first reading?
That's what I would like to do.
That way people can kind of talk it over. Get some more input.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, so we're not making any decisions next time. We're just presenting.
I just would like stakeholder input is really what I would prefer to do before we make a decision on it. I really would like, I value the stake stakeholder input.
And the Neola policy that I presented, that I put the sample is very vague. It doesn't, right, it doesn't lock us down to anything.
I think that if we are getting stakeholder in input, I think our students should have some input as well. So if we're going to
pine with that.
Any sort of survey, I value staff input, but I would also like the, at least the high schoolers' input as to whether they would like to be part of this process.
Well, I think the input that we would get from our high schoolers is if they applied or not. I don't know if it is worth putting out a survey to our students and our staff and.
Yeah, and that's.
And all that. And it's, it's just extra man-hours that.
I'm just saying if we're going to.
If we were.
Poll our stakeholders, I want to make sure the students are part of that.
Right.
That's the decision.
I mean, it would be interesting to hear from a communication standpoint. I mean, you have the students up here, but you don't have any teachers.
I did invite the Teachers Union to come speak to us.
No, I'm saying, but they're not sitting at the board like the students are, you know, so.
Well, I value.
Well, I'm just saying that, just as an example, you you could end up putting all kinds of people on the board as a communicator.
Most area school districts don't have anybody else other than.
Yeah, well.
Student representatives.
Not saying I want.
I'm not just making this. It, there are a lot of schools that have student representatives on their board.
Well, I think proceeding with a a reading of a potential draft policy is an okay next step. Uh, the other thing is whether we adopt it or not, we, the the next step would be whether or not anyone would, you know, students would actually apply.
Yes.
And I think it's important to keep in mind that we could propose that we try this for a year trial and then reassess. Was this successful? Was it?
If we considered moving forward in any way, I would recommend a a trial, yeah, with a start and end date.
I think sometimes it's just important to remember that we have that as an option to try it.
Yeah, yeah.
That we're not committing to this for forever.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. So are we fine with uh, reading more exploration at our next board meeting?
Absolutely. Wants to put put a policy forward for our first reading, next, next board meeting? Sure, why not?
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Um, are there any other um, subcommittee reports or anything that we need to discuss? Moving on to the comments and questions from the audience, um, I want to make a reminder to everyone to please direct your questions and comments to the board. Um, this is not a time for two-way communication. If a response is warranted, the superintendent will do so before the next scheduled board meeting. You will have three minutes to speak and please begin by telling us your name and address. So does anybody have comments or questions? Hearing none. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Support.
Yep. Um, are there any questions or discussion about that? Hearing none. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you very much.
Just welcome to the new staff.
Thank you.
Welcome back. Welcome, welcome back.